I call to order the meeting of Tuesday, June 12, 2018, of the Portsmouth City Council. Again, I called this meeting to order. And I'll ask Councilman Ray Smith to give our invocation. I'll ask our colleagues, my colleagues on council, to stand. And then after the invocation, Councilman Bill Moody will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear God, our heavenly Father, the one who rules and master and super rules, the one with all of our health and our strength coming from, we ask your blessings this evening over these proceedings. We pray, heavenly Father, that you will be the benefactor of all of the good. And we pray, heavenly Father, that you would bless this occasion, bless this day, bless all those that are assembled here. Bless this great city, our great state, and this great country. We ask these things, in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll ask my colleagues on council to indicate your presence tonight by hitting the yes button. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum?
Yes, sir.
One hundred percent. Our next item of business is the consideration of the approval of minutes of previous council meetings. We have the minutes of a call meeting of May 21, 2018, the minutes of a call meeting of May 22, 2018, and the minutes of a regular meeting, May 22, 2018. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the form and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And our next item, the public hearings, Agenda Item 18214, which is the consideration of the disposal of certain property. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption?
Yes, sir. Public hearing on a proposed resolution declaring 15 Mimosa Road Tax Parcel 0641-0140 to be surplus real property and authorizing the conveyance of said property to Willard J. Smith.
Thank you. And before we open the public hearing, Dr. Patton, do you have a short briefing on this matter?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I'll ask Deputy City Manager Vincent Jones to please come forward and give a briefing.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Simmons, and members of council. Before you, you have 15 Mimosa Drive. This is a parcel that the city acquired in 1986. We think possibly in connection with roadway improvements on Mimosa Drive. The property was purchased in January of 2018. And at that point, the owner approached the city about purchasing the parcel that is highlighted in yellow because that parcel is the small parcel that is owned by the city. He was unaware at that point when they purchased that that little parcel was owned by the city. In accordance with Virginia State Code, the city is authorized to convey real property only after a public hearing has been held. The size of the property is .04 acres. And the city assessor has assessed it as a property that has no other use if it's not connected to the larger parcel beside it. That value is $1,500. And that value would then be added to the larger parcel as well.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of council? Thank you, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Whitaker.
Mr. Jones, I meant to have asked this earlier. How much did the city pay for that parcel?
Dr. Whitaker, we can find that amount for you, but it was from 1986, and I can check to see what that amount was.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. With that, I'll now open the public hearing. This is a public hearing on the disposal of this particular piece of property, 15 Mimosa Road. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak either for or against this matter? Please come to the lectern and state your name and address. Anybody desiring to speak on this matter? Seeing none, this public hearing is now closed. And this brings us to Item 18215. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption for this item?
Invitation for bids for a wireless facilities franchise.
And would you read the further narrative, please?
Yes, sir. Eighteen, you're talking 18216?
215.
That was the narrative. Okay. I have a letter. You're referring to the letter, Mayor?
Well, before we get that...
Okay. I'm with you. Item 18215 is the receipt of bids pursuant to an invitation for bids for a wireless facilities franchise. In accordance with state law, public notice was placed in the local press by the city clerk to accept bids for a non-exclusive wireless facilities franchise agreement. The agreement will have a term of 10 years with up to three renewal terms of five years each and will allow for the placement of wireless facilities within the city's right-of-way.
Have we received any bids? And if so, how many?
One bid has been received.
Will you please read the bid and mark it for identification, please?
Yes, sir. Dear Ms. White, please consider this correspondence a formal request to submit a bid for a wireless facilities franchise with the City of Portsmouth, Virginia. Cox Wireless Access seeks access to rights-of-way for the installation of facilities used in the provision of communication services. Enclosed for your review and reference, you will find City of Portsmouth, Virginia, Non-Exclusive Wireless Facilities Franchise Agreement with Cox Wireless Access LLC as finalized pursuant to discussions with city staff and the city attorney's office. Please feel free to contact me with any questions. I look forward to attending the Portsmouth City Council meeting on Tuesday, June 12, 2018, for awarding of the bid.
And you have marked it for identification as Cox Wireless Access?
Yes, sir.
LLC. Are there any other bids to be submitted at this time? Any other bids? If there are no additional bids, I declare the bidding closed. And now we'll have a public hearing on the proposal that we just received. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption to the public hearing, please?
Yes, sir. Just this, okay. Adoption of an ordinance accepting the bid submitted by Cox Wireless Access LLC for a non-exclusive wireless facilities franchise agreement having a term of 10 years with up to three renewal terms of five years each authorizing the placement of wireless facilities within the city's public ways.
This is a public hearing on the acceptance of this proposal and the adoption of the ordinance that's just been read, the caption. And so I now declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody that wants to speak on this matter? And if you do, please come to the lectern and state your name and address. Does anybody desire to speak on this matter? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed. And Madam City Manager, what is the recommendation of you and your staff on this matter?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, city staff recommends that the bid by Cox Wireless Access LLC be accepted.
Again, just as a matter of form, Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance, excuse me, adoption of an ordinance accepting the bid submitted by Cox Wireless Access LLC for a non-exclusive wireless facilities franchise agreement having a term of 10 years with up to three renewable terms of five years each authorizing the placement of wireless facilities within the city's public ways.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, ready for the question. All in favor, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to our next matter on the agenda, unfinished business. Item 18195, which has several components. Would you read Item A?
Yes, sir. Item A, ordinance granting the request of the City of Portsmouth to amend the zoning, city zoning ordinance to increase the minimum lot sizes only for new subdivisions and re-subdivisions in the general residential, urban residential, and urban residential high zoning districts at the request of the Portsmouth City Council. CA 1801, first reading vote, seven zero, approved.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, please vote yes if you're in favor of the motion, no if you're opposed. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to the B component. Would you read that caption, please?
Yes, sir. Ordinance granting the request of Robert C. Barclay, the fourth Esquire, on behalf of WP2 LLC for a proper rezoning of 303 Bedford Court. Z 1801, first reading vote, five two, approved.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion on this matter? We have a motion that's been made for approval and that's been duly seconded. We'll now have discussion on the motion. Councilman Moody.
Mayor, I'd like to offer a substitute motion.
Okay.
And that motion would be to table the item until our second meeting of July.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, do you have that meeting date?
Yes, sir. Is it June or July?
July.
That would be July 24.
Okay. Okay, the motion is to table to July 24, our second meeting in July, which has a second because this is a motion to table. There is no discussion. So we're ready for the question. All in favor of the question, of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. This is a table motion. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries for three.
Yes, sir.
We do have people who had signed up, which would have been part of the discussion. And so there'll be no discussion on the motion because it's been tabled until the second meeting in July. And the next item of business, Councilman Moody, did you?
Mayor, we've had these situations in the past. And I'm always of the mind that when people take their time, their effort to come to City Hall, which for some is not an easy task, that we would at least hear them out. If nothing else, we'll be prepared for, we'll know their thoughts and their feelings to help us come to a decision on the 24th of July. So I would ask for a consensus to, let's go ahead and hear the people out.
Okay. What is the pleasure of council?
Would you be in favor of hearing these folks tonight?
I have a request to speak.
You have a request. Let's handle Bill's consensus first. What is your consensus? Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Dr. Whitaker has asked for the floor.
Yes, I would like to hear from the residents as well as I would like to get an explanation from council as far as why this is being tabled.
Okay. Let's hear from the citizens first that have signed up, and then we'll...
Well, just a point of order, Mr. Mayor, or clarification. It would be good for the citizens to know before they get up and speak why the matter is being tabled.
Well, let's ask the originator of the motion to speak to that. And the chair will ask Councilman Moody to respond.
Mayor, is that acceptable under, since the item has been tabled? Is that within Robert's Rules of Order?
No, not really, because the, under a motion to table, there is no discussion on the motion. He's asking for you to explain your motivation to do that. And because we do follow Robert's Rules of Order, why don't we have that discussion offline? Because we'll get a chance to consider the motion again, this item, in July.
I certainly don't mind doing that. It's no big secret. But I also want to, we're a council that operates by Robert's Rules of Order, and I don't want to run afoul of those rules.
Okay. Keeping with that, we'll move to the citizens. And the first citizen is Pam Phillips. And ma'am, you have...
Mr. Mayor, point of order, I'm not clear on the issue with Robert's Rules of Order to just give an explanation. There's not a discussion.
A rule on the point of order, a motion to table, there is no discussion on that. The motion was to table the matter to July 24. And under Robert's Rules of Order, there is no discussion. So that takes care of that.
Just for a point of clarification, if you're going to follow Robert's Rules of Order, you may want the parliamentarian to, or the city attorney, to give a better interpretation of when a motion to lay on the table is appropriate. And I didn't hear a motion presented for something to be tabled.
Councilman Whitaker?
But if that's the consensus, I'm saying if you're going to follow Robert's Rules of Order, follow it all the way. But if that's the consensus of the council not to explain why an item is being tabled so that citizens can be informed before they speak, then if that's the majority's decision, then so be it. But I'm just saying if we're going to follow it, make sure we follow it.
We are following it.
I don't think so.
Well, you've asked for a point of order, and I've ruled on your point of order. We are following Robert's Rules of Order. The motion was duly made and seconded. It was a legitimate motion, and we will proceed. Councilman Smith has asked for the floor, and I'll recognize you, Councilman Smith.
Yeah, I was just going to ask the same thing. It wouldn't hurt to say why it's being tabled.
Thank you. We'll call the first, because we have a consensus to allow the citizens who have signed up to speak on this. We do have a number. We'll hear from the first citizen, Pam Phillips. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Pamela J. Phillips. I'm a resident of Parkview and live on Webster Avenue. I was actually present during the last meeting when this ordinance was talked about in its first and initial voting and heard from a number of the citizens that are affected by this ordinance to rezone this particular parcel. And I was just a little disheartened that eight, nine people came up here to discuss it, all of them opposing the ordinance, and it was carried. To do a little bit of background, I actually drove into the neighborhood last night. I wanted to see what some of these citizens were so concerned about. I'm familiar with the area. Just to get a better understanding, look and see what the homes look like, but also to get a better lay of the land. I also went through and went on the GIS looking at the parcel size compared to the residential parcels that are currently in the neighborhood. It is a larger parcel, but is not so much larger to be considered in a different avenue as far as ordinance is concerned. The other thing was, is I actually, in looking with GIS, it actually isn't a corner lot. The corner of the two streets is actually city property. And unless there's going to be an easement or another avenue granted, it's going to be very difficult to, for the lot to be marketed in anything other than a residence that it's currently listed as. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Betty Mason. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Betty Mason, and I reside at 204 Dumont Avenue in the Portsmouth Acres section of Portsmouth. I'm not going to go over how this rezoning will bring addict traffic and potential crime to our neighborhood, as we pleaded that case last time to no avail. This time, I want to appeal to your human side. As elected officials who were elected by us, are you not supposed to consider and serve the citizens of Portsmouth? Then how can you allow a rezoning that can bring anything from an ABC store to an adult bookstore to be built in our community? How are we supposed to live and raise our children and grandchildren in a community with that type of element? This is our community, the place we call home. Please, this time, consider us the citizens. If you continue to allow neighborhoods that are zoned for single-family homes to be susceptible to rezoning, you won't have any neighborhoods that citizens can feel safe to raise their children. And I am sure that I, as well as a lot of people in this room, will move to a city where our families can feel safe. Please, as our elected officials, vote no to this like-commercial rezoning. C 1801. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Wayne Willis. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening to you all. My name is Wayne Willis. I'm president of Portsmouth Acres Civic League. But first, I would like to apologize to Bill Moody. The last time I was here, the last council meeting, I made a snide remark about Bill that was totally uncalled for. He came out to see our drainage problem on Lee Dale Avenue at my request. And then he agreed to look into the problem that existed, has existed. And he said he would get back to me. Well, in my speech, I came up with a snide remark. I should not have done it, saying, "Well, I guess he's still looking into it." But I humbly apologize for that. I'm sorry. Shouldn't have done that. Excuse me. But concerning the Z 1801, if it passes, almost anything could be placed there according to code, a total of 62 different businesses, just to name a few. An adult bookstore, an adult entertainment establishment, which to me is nothing but a night spot, a massage parlor, adult motion picture theater, a liquor store, convenience store, plus 56 other businesses that would have carte blanche privileges to be put to build there. Carte blanche, for some of the audience that might, I didn't know. I had to look it up. Carte blanche means full discretionary power given to a person, free rein, free hand, sanctioned, or blank check. Council would have no power to govern the selection of any of the 62 businesses in your plan set forth in the guidelines. This is worse than the mixed-use plan that Planning Commission put forth and voted six to zero on. Even Planning's proposal is said to be according to comprehensive plan. However, Portsmouth Acres residents were very displeased to be told that we need a business there to be placed there. If a mixed-use plan were approved, they could require a use permit, which is about the only difference in the whole thing from what I've been explaining to, Bill explained it to them, and so did the mayor. The same types of businesses are possible with both of them. It has been told to City Council that it's not feasible to place houses there. We would like to point out that council has most recently approved on the first reading, if I understand correctly, lot sizes to be reduced to as little, of some, as 50 by 30 feet. If I understood that correctly now, I'm not sure, but I think I did. With smaller lot sizes, six to eight homes could be erected there, which should bring a nice revenue for the city without destroying the integrity of our neighborhood. Something different needs to be considered for the site. A little far-fetched to some of you, but the property was purchased for $95,000. Perhaps the city could purchase the site for a reasonable amount and place a mini park there and reroute the entrance to the industrial park through a portion of the lot, thereby getting rid of the sharp S curve that's there and making things better for us in Bedford Court. This would allow, and hoping that it would also allow a nice sign for the animal shelter to be placed there and a sign clearly identifying the business park, which there's no sign there at all now. And this would help us tremendously with our drive-through traffic problem and our drainage and tranquility. And we ask you to please help us by reconsidering your last vote of yes. We only need two votes to retain our tranquility in our neighborhood. So shouldn't the Portsmouth Acres be residents be afforded some input on the impact to be forced upon us? Please vote no to the proposed action, possibly abandoning this plan and start anew. And I thank you. And would all in favor of our stand, our opposition to this, would you please stand, please? Thank you very much.
Please, no display. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is John Perea. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. First off, like I say, I've been a resident of Portsmouth all along for forty years. I graduated Charleston High School. I remember in the seventies, we had every new car deal you could think of. I mean, Portsmouth was kind of flourishing, and I see it's coming back around. I think we should look for bigger businesses and want something industrial. We have plenty of areas around that location that could be used for industrial. This here, when I purchased my home, there was a house there originally, and I'm sure if y'all, when you bought your home and you moved in and there's a house across the street from you, and all of a sudden now, the house got tore down years ago and somebody wants to zone it industrial, I'm not even sure what they want to put in there. It's not been specified definitely what they want to do with the property, and it concerns me. I have my family, my grandchild, and members of our community that do as well. And, you know, we are concerned with it, what's gonna happen, what could happen. I mean, everybody would fear that. I'm sure you would too, if you're in our shoes. So I'm really asking the people that voted for this proposition to rethink about it and think about our families and all, and put yourself in our shoes to see what we're going through. I did see Mr. Dr. Whittaker come out, I spoke to him in the neighborhood. He came out to see what we had going on there. And when I first bought that house thirteen years ago, I never knew the neighborhood was there. And now, I think it's one of Portsmouth's best-kept secrets. I mean, the location is awesome to me. I get around the interstate, it's quiet back in that neighborhood, other than the train, but I'm used to that. But like I said, please take into consideration our families. And what would you think if something like that was happening to you? Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Teresa Willis Knapp. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and citizens. I am Teresa L. Willis Knapp. I rent a home from my father, Wayne Willis, which is adjacent to 303 Bedford Court, and I oppose Z-1801. The documents I just handed the Sergeant-at-Arms is a copy of our petition we handed into planning, which, as I'm understood, is not part of the records. Since it was not passed on, I wanted to be sure to give you that right off the bat. And it's a bit amiss that it has been omitted up to this point. If you would please refer to the item listed as Attachment A. The very first three on the first column of the list are very alarming. Adult bookstore, adult entertainment establishment, adult motion picture theater. And of course, if you go to the second column about midway down, there's a liquor store. This is a huge concern. This plainly simply cannot be the outcome. If you vote yes, you are virtually, I don't know how to say it, throwing sixty families, not people, but families, under the bus, because the person who owns the property doesn't want to use it according to the zoning that it is now and the zoning that it was when it was purchased. If you approve this, it will allow Mr. Wright to openly flip this property. What will happen when everyone starts doing it? This would be a very slippery slope. Will the proposed rezoning improve our roads? No. Improve our drainage? No. The flow of traffic, the value of our properties? Or will it contribute to the peace and tranquility of our neighborhood? And of course, the answer to all of those is no. These few reasons alone should convince you to vote no to oppose this rezoning request and tell the owner to use the property as currently zoned. As much as I would like this to be over, even deferring for further discussion and consideration is better than council's approval. I pray for y'all every day, and I even pray for Mr. Wright, and I pray that it would be in God's will that this application be denied. And I hope that I brought something to light which will influence you to vote no on Z-1801. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The chair recognizes the vice mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Ma'am, just for your edification and others who have seen this Attachment A that you presented us, just so you understand the Attachment A that you gave us, under the general mixed-use and the light industrial, the U in the column for adult bookstore, adult entertainment, adult motion picture, et cetera, all of those uses require a special use permit under any zoning. So it is not a carte blanche. Well, I'm just telling you what your form says. That's a city form. All of those U's mean an additional use permit is required, no matter which zoning. That P stands for permitted, and the U stands for use permit. Am I correct, Mr. Baldwin?
Let's direct that to the city manager.
Mayor, vice mayor, members of council, Mr. Baldwin will answer the question if you so desire, counsel.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, as the vice mayor explained, all of the adult uses in the city require use permits. And I'd also point out, within the zoning ordinance itself, there are also some separation distance requirements, depending on what the use is, that might further prohibit. And again, we haven't looked at any proposals for adult uses in quite some time, but there are separation requirements from neighbors for adult uses that would further impact the ability to use property for adult uses.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Jerry Willis. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you for letting me speak. And I want to let you start thinking about who gets what out of this deal. All right? Say y'all do grant this rezoning. All right? The applicant, he makes his big sale, he goes on to something else, you know? All right? But then, down the line here, this could be setting up bad planning, bad practice, because who knows, someone else has some property and say, "Well, look, this guy, he got this thing rezoned in residential area. Why shouldn't they allow it to me? And I can do the same thing, make more money." Okay, well, that's all good. Everybody wants to make money. But money isn't everything. That's all there is to it. I mean, some people can't see anything but money, but money is not everything. All right? And of course, if he gets his rezoning done, then the city would make some more taxes. That's all well and good, but it would not be good for the neighborhood left behind. It's the big question mark to us. We don't even have an idea for sure what could be moved in. I mean, we've heard a lot of possibilities, you know, but until it really went through, we wouldn't know. And for all that being said, we just cannot see where anything that could be moved in could be a benefit to our neighborhood. Looks like the only thing that we could see is down the line, more troubles for our neighborhood, bringing our neighborhood down. Seems like you should be listening to the Planning Commission, what they told you about, you know, to not accept this rezoning. And of course, we agree that the best thing to do would be leave the zoning alone and leave it residential as it is. But we just can't foresee for this neighborhood, other than staying the way it is, that it could be beneficial for us. And like I say, it could be a bad practice, bad planning down the road. Other people could do the same thing, not just here, other places in the city. I mean, coming to a neighborhood next to you, coming to your neighborhood, maybe, if everybody's got enough money, make anything happen, apparently, you know? So we are asking you, please, to think about this, that we are people too, you know? And it will definitely affect us. We don't know how, but we know it will affect us. And we'd feel like it's not gonna be positive to affect us neither. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Elvire Johnson Williams. Ma'am, you have five minutes. Not here. The next speaker is John Blunt, Jr. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmen, women. Good evening. My name is John Blunt, Jr. I stay at 4014 Garwood Avenue. I've been a resident here in Portsmouth, a business owner, a veteran of the United States Marines. I have been in Portsmouth over thirty years. I have invested every moment of my life to improve this city on some form or fashion. I bring pride, I bring business, I bring work. I work down the street here at the actual Portsmouth Naval Hospital. I work in the city as well. I've spent every day of my life over the last thirty years to come to this moment and realize that in order for me to maintain a legacy, a family, a quality of life in this city, I had to sacrifice. I sacrificed three wars. I sacrificed working a single-income household, raising three children, eighteen months, seven years, and ten years, all of which, two of those are a block over from this location. I watch my kids get on the bus just about every day. And when the days that I am off, though, I physically walk them to that bus stop. Now, the reason why I'm standing here right now is because I'm opposed to this. I'm opposed to the fact that this is even happening, this discussion is happening right now. I know most of you have children, have grandchildren, even great-grandchildren, and all of you can understand the concern a parent has for the safety of those children. When I go to bed at night, I make sure the doors is locked, I walk the perimeter of my home. When I get up in the morning, I check those locks again and make sure that they have a very warm environment to wake up to. The biggest thing I'm looking at right now is that what is this discussion about? What is this decision really about? Is it about a person opposing an idea or a person opposing a concept in this city? I understand things might be tight in this city, though, but this is just playing out wrong. There is nothing to gain in the midst of all this, though, and I for one can sit there and say is that I have not seen any positive thing it would bring to this community. Of all the places I could have lived of in Hampton Roads, I chose Portsmouth because that's the place I know the most. My parents raised us here as children. My mother went to your church. I started my business in this city and not anywhere in Hampton Roads. Right now, I'm sitting over here voicing my concern over the fact that this right here is flat-out wrong, period. There is nothing else to really sit over here to come to terms then that someone who has no input or any desire to improve our community will bring a concept to you all, though, and sit over here and say that it's for the greater good of Portsmouth. Now, I sit over here and I look to you and I ask you, and I challenge each one of you to sit there and think about last night, or this weekend, or the last holidays that you held your kids. You held your grandkids, you held your great-grandkids. And what would it be, what would you stand and say here right now to change somebody's mind knowing they would put something that would put them in danger every single day? Have you ever been, almost ran over for trying to exorcise your own neighborhood? Have you ever seen a grown man rob a store and run through your neighborhood, leave a car, police chasing? Have you ever seen a child nearly ran over or a car split in two at an intersection at the same location? Have any of you seen this? I'm asking you to sit over here and take a moment and think very long and very, very indetently within yourself, though, and understand what would you be saying to a group of people who challenged the very quality of life that you all experience every night? I'm asking you to sit over here and think that why would a man come into my neighborhood and make my kids in danger even more than what they are right now? You know how the world is going. You know how chaotic this world is right now. And for somebody to sit over here and says, "Yes, I approve this decision," is saying that you don't care about how we live, what our quality of life is, what we sacrifice day in and day out. Every day that we pay a tax dollar, every day we pay a mortgage, every day my company pays us taxes in the city, I care about your work and I care about this city. So for somebody to sit there and says, "We approve this because of," insert whatever reason, whatever concept you might have, you are looking at every citizen in the city and says, "We don't care. We don't care about your quality of life. We don't care about your kids. We don't care about the fact that you have sacrificed yourself to come to this city to do business in, that you went over here and went past job after job after job to work in this city, to pay taxes to the city, to register your vehicle in the city." I am disgusted. I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I make sure I came here today. I could be at church right now, but I really felt like this was a decision that I had to make tonight, and I'm asking and challenging each one of y'all to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, sir. No outbursts, please, not you. I'm asking everybody to show respect. If you can't, I'll ask the Sergeant-at-Arms to ask you to leave the chambers. The next speaker is Dorothy Flowers. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Portsmouth residents, I'm Paula Vogers.
Ma'am, would you speak at the microphone, please?
I'm sorry. How's that? Good evening, everybody. My name is Dorothy Flowers, and I live at 204 Bedford Court in Portsmouth, Virginia, in Portsmouth Acres. I'm here once again to try and get y'all to reconsider your vote on Z-1801, the rezoning of 303 Bedford Court, and asking those of you that voted yes to reconsider and vote no. Now, I'm not a politician, a developer, a real estate lawyer, et cetera, so I don't understand how things work down here. But I can't understand how you can vote yes to rezoning on property when you have no idea what they plan to even build there, because I don't see how a bar or some of these other establishments they mentioned will be good for Portsmouth. But if you vote yes, they can build just about anything there, I gather. But you already know this, just as you've heard the issues and concerns from my fellow residents and voters in this community. So I'm not gonna waste your time by even going over the issues, but instead, I'm going to ask you to go back in time and remember when you was one of us. What was it or wasn't this council doing when you decided to run for office? Was it the ever-increasing personal property tax? Or maybe it's turning on your TV and seeing every day another robbery, shooting, or killing in our city? Or maybe you just got tired of coming down here to City Council and your concerns are falling on deaf ears? Whatever the reason was, you came with the intention of approving our community and our city, to make Portsmouth not only a great place to visit, but even a greater place to live. Now, I know how sometimes you can get so caught up in the political game that you forget why you ran in the first place, not to mention the folks that put you there. So I hope you understand where I'm coming from. When the majority of voters in this room have asked you to vote no, and you chose to vote yes to three people who ask you, who's for this, and those are the same three people that are gonna make the biggest profit. So I'm asking you tonight to really think about how you vote. Ask yourself, if you lived in this community or had family living in our community, would you vote the same way? But most important, when you leave here tonight, can you honestly say the vote you made was for the good of the community, the residents, the voters, and the city of Portsmouth, who put their trust in you to make that decision? And final, yes, we're just a handful of voters, but combined, we have lived over two hundred years in Portsmouth. We have family, and we have friends here, and many- years in Portsmouth. We have family and we have friends here, and many of them are voters. And though our voices may not be heard today, I can guarantee you, come election time, our voices will be heard. I ask you tonight to please vote no, show Portsmouth that you are the p- that the people's opinions do matter and that y'all are for the people. Put our faith back into this City Council, we've, back into our City Council that we voted for, and show us that you do care for our communities and for us and our concerns. I thank you. And before I leave, I am one of those people who recently had an accident at that corner of Garwood and Bedford. But thank God, my grandchild was with me, that the only, the only casualty was the front end of my car. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker is Mark Adogie Atroski, and sir, you have five minutes?
CRS.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Council and fellow interested parties. I wrote to you earlier today with some observations on this topic. I'd like to expand on one aspect of that letter. The last time that this matter came before you as a public hearing item, your minutes record that there were eleven speakers. Of the eleven speakers, only one spoke in favor of this proposal, and that was the applicant himself. That's a rarity. Typically, whatever proposal comes before council and to the Planning Commission before it, there are usually a couple of other people who favor it. So, why would it be this kind of an exception? Let me digress for a moment from that train and come back to it. The property in question, when it was purchased, was zoned general residential. That was a known quantity to the purchaser. And so he made a decision to risk acquiring that property with its zoning and to make some use of it that would return money on his investment. Somewhere along the line between the time of purchase and the time of application, he decided that the use, the longstanding use of that property, was not going to give him a return on investment that he desired. And so he came with a proposal to change its use to something that's not compatible with the other uses in that neighborhood. Now, had he been concerned about his neighbors, I would think that he would have gone out or sent out a representative to discuss with the neighbors what his intentions were and ask if that was all right with them, because after all, his neighbors are fellow stakeholders. They are people who invested their money with an assurance based on what was in the comprehensive plan, that surrounding properties within that neighborhood would be similar to theirs. And so their investments are now at risk because he has taken this action without consideration for the other people who are also invested in that neighborhood. So I would say that the sole interest here is in making a return on investment. As somebody who invests myself, not in real estate, but in stocks, bonds, mutual funds, and so on, I recognize that there is no guarantee that anything in which I've invested is going to return more than I paid in or that I won't lose money on that investment. And so this particular applicant, as an investor, and somebody who's invested quite a lot in this city, should have gone in with the same realization. So there's no guarantee, there's no entitlement to have that change made. By the same token, the people who invested in their homes in that neighborhood had a reasonable expectation based on the comprehensive plan that their investment would be a safe investment, to the extent that real estate is a safe investment. Typically, your family home is a good investment. So I believe that there is no entitlement to a change in absence, absent the concurrence of the neighbors, the responsible action by council is to deny this rezoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is John A. Wright, and sir, you have five minutes? I don't, are you here? Okay, thank you. Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Baldwin, if.
Dr. Pat.
Mr. Baldwin, would you please come to the podium with council's concurrence?
And if the Sergeant-at-Arms could give this document. Mr. Baldwin, I just want to make sure the, the document that I believe it was Ms. Willis-Napp, who gave us the handle, that, that document is the current document that shows the information in regards to the requirements on that property?
Well, this is an extraction from our zoning works. Would you love me to have one second?
Okay.
I would say this does generally align with our, our use table.
So the, the issue that the applicant seemed to have addressed last time dealt with the convenience store with a gas station?
That's correct.
And so according to the attachment, under general mixed use, it would require a permit?
That's correct. Under general mixed use, the convenience store with gas pumps would require a use permit.
Right. And under industrial light, it would be permitted?
By right.
By right.
That's correct.
The recommendation of the Planning Commission was to deny.
That's correct.
The recommendation of the staff was that it be general mixed use with the proffers.
That's correct.
Okay. And the citizens of, the residents of that community asked that this not be rezoned, which I agree with the residents. I'm, I'm looking at this as a precedent that may be set here, that if a, if an applicant wants to bypass going through a use permit through general mixed use, that applicant could request for a zoning change to industrial light and therefore would be permitted by use and there would be no use permit required.
Generally speaking, applicants can come in and file rezoning applications, certainly. They could file rezoning applications similar to what you have before you.
Right. And so this, this applicant, in order to bypass the use permit is, and bypass the recommendation of the, our staff, is seeking to go through industrial light, therefore not having to go through the use permit process.
That was the staff's interpretation, yes.
Right. And, and so therefore, when another case comes before council where someone is requesting general mixed use to industrial light, that puts the council in a position of its decisions appearing to be arbitrary. And, and so I, I just want to raise that to my colleagues, that your vote to support this going against the commission and the staff, as well as the residents, that I think we're setting a precedent in regards to how we handle rezoning issues that may not be in the best light for the city. The last time I remember council going against recommendations of its own staff and commission, it led us into a million-dollar lawsuit, which the city had to pay.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Mr. Baldwin, I have a follow-up question. What, what does the comprehensive plan?
As I recall, I think the comprehensive plan identified this for mixed use in the future land use map. I believe we identified that in the staff report you had before you at your last meeting.
Okay, so we're, we're certain that the com- plan did recommend?
That's my recol- that's my recollection, yes.
General mixed use?
Yes, it was mixed use.
Not to put, uh, why don't we ask the City Manager to, to respond back because he's saying he recalls that? Would that be appropriate?
Yeah, we, we need, yes, we, we need to know specifically. The, the other thing is, how many of these types of zoning changes have occurred that circumvented the use permit process in, in recent years?
This is my first one since I've been here in the last five years, but has requested to go into a light industrial in this fashion.
You know, I, I view that, and this is just my opinion, I, I view that as a loophole that you, if you may, that as a council, we need to, we need to look into, and I think the mayor's already called for a discussion on some of our zoning.
Exactly.
Procedures, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
This matter is coming up again on July twenty-fourth.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I have a.
I, I see you, and I'm just making a point, that we'll discuss this at our twenty-fourth meeting. And so I'm going to recognize only two more, and that's Dr. Whitaker and then Councilman Smith.
Right. I just wanted to respond to what Mr. Moody just mentioned as far as there being a loophole. There's really not a loophole. The council decided to approve an applicant requesting industrial light against the recommendation of staff. There's no loophole here. The staff made the recommendation and the majority of council rejected it. So I don't really see a loophole. It's just that council made a choice to agree with the applicant. The applicant wasn't using any loophole.
Loophole probably wasn't the right choice of word, but our current zoning code allows for this technique, if you may, to be used. And I have a problem with that when someone's using it to circumvent the use permit process.
Right, I agree. And that's why we have a staff that catches those things and makes recommendations to us, which they did, but a majority of council decided to ignore that recommendation.
There, there have been many cases that we didn't necessarily take the recommendation of the, of staff or the Planning Commi- Mission, and usually those are based on valid reasons.
Chairman, this is a good discussion, and we'll get a chance to discuss this matter on the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Smith.
I'm, I'm just going to agree. We were just to hear the citizens, not a discussion amongst us, ourselves, and we need to end it.
Dr. Whitaker, we're going to move on?
No, no, it's not a discussion issue. I just, for next, for our next meeting, for the agenda, I noticed on this agenda, it did not explain the change on the original agenda that mentioned rezoning from general mixed use to industrial light. If on our next agenda, that language could be included back as the original.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. This matter will be tabled, or is tabled, until council's second meeting in July, which is July twenty-fourth. Is that correct? All right, this brings us to item eighteen-two-seventeen, which is the consideration of adoption of a certain ordinance. Madam Clerk, would you read the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting adoption assistance funds in the amount of $64,735 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said amount in the FY-2018 Social Services Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to provide adoption assistance.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to move for the adoption?
Move for adoption.
Second. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Thank you. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Consideration of item eighteen-two-eighteen, which is the consideration of adoption of another ordinance. Would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $10,000 from the Virginia Tourism Corporation and appropriating said amount in the FY-2018 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Marketing, Communications, and Tourism to market the 2019 Yummosha Festival.
Thank you. So that we can consider there, this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to eighteen-two-nineteen, which is the consideration of another ordinance. Would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting $157,971 of Community Development Block Grant Program Funds and $112,199 of Home Investment Partnership Program Funds and appropriating said amounts in the FY-2019 Community Planning and Development Fund for use in implementing the annual action plan.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Move adoption.
Second. Any discussion on this motion, which is to adopt the ordinance? All in favor the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries, which brings us to eighteen-two-twenty, which is the consideration of a resolution. Madam Clerk, would you read that caption?
Yes, sir. A resolution declaring a certain city-owned property having a size of four hundredths of an acre and an address of 15 Mimosa Road, Tax Parcel 0641-0140, to be surplus real property and authorizing the conveyance of same to Willard J. Smith.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Amen. Second.
We have a motion that's duly made and seconded. Any discussion? And Dr. Whitaker asked a question. Is that why you're asking people? I think they may have the answer. Mr. Butt, do you have the answer on the value?
Mayor, members of council, I believe the question was, how much did we pay for that property in eighty-six? There was no consideration in that deed. Apparently, it was given to the city. I don't know why it was a leftover parcel, so.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Is Councilman Smith okay?
Yes.
Okay. Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to new business, which is 18 to 21, boards and commissions.
Mayor, members of council, there are no boards and commission members to deliberate tonight, and we'll consider that at our next meeting.
18 to 22, items submitted by council members. Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I learned this week, as my colleagues on council did, that our Cock Island Race that has been in existence for almost 30 years won't be held this year. That event is organized and founded by a private organization, I believe the Portsmouth Boat Club, and I know through the years, the city has given it some financial support. But being a, we're certainly a maritime city, and we're out to promote that. We have a large maritime presence, both state and private, and I hate to see an event like that, that was a quality event, disappear from the city of Portsmouth. So I would like, if there's consensus among my colleagues, and I do know, in fact, we heard tonight, that there are grants available for some of these things. I would like for staff to come back to council with a plan, working in concert with the Portsmouth Boat Club, and perhaps even some other maritime businesses in the city of Portsmouth, and see how we can bring this back next year, perhaps even bigger and better, because I don't want to see this event that is well-known throughout the region disappear. If there's a consensus, Mayor, I would like to see staff come back and do time to give us their thoughts and ideas on how to preserve that quality event.
Okay, to my colleagues on council, is there a consensus? Dr. Whitaker.
My concern with that is that this is an event which is privately sponsored, and I think that when we start treating certain groups differently in the city, because it's not like this is an event that started as a desire of council, but from what Mr. Moody said, and also from what I've heard in the past, this was sponsored by a private entity, the Portsmouth Boat Club. And now to be putting public funds into a private-sponsored event, and no criteria to it, I mean, where do we draw the line? Which groups do we support? I think that it opens up a deeper issue of equity, and so I'm not in favor of this unless there's something on the table where private, other private groups can get this type of sponsorship from the city. And this has been going on for a number of years, and it appears as if it was just entitled and supposed to have happened. But if there's no equity on the table, I'm not, I'm not in favor of it.
Councilman Moody.
I think in my statement, I mentioned that the city reach out to the founding club, the Portsmouth Boat Club, as well as other private maritime entities in our city, and also work with the Cock Island organizers to see if we can procure some grants to keep that going. That has a value to the city. Anytime you bring people to this city to spend money, and boat owners have the ability to do that, I don't think we should let that opportunity pass us by. So, and I've also spoken, years ago, we had ports events that was a 501(c)(3) organization that helped get sponsorships, sponsorships that the city is unable to get. That's why we need an organization like that. So it's a private organization actually working with these people to bring events to Portsmouth. And if I'm not mistaken, I think at our past retreat, we talked about the need to have more events in the city. We do not have enough, and especially events that are maritime in nature. So we either need to get with it, or we're gonna die on the vine. So we need to, we need to ramp it up when it comes to events. Every week I pass Waterside, and on the crossover, there's some advertisement on another event that they're having on the weekend. We need to have more of those. I think we've come a long ways, but we have a long ways to go, and this was an event that has a 30-year history, and I want to see us work with that group to see if we can't keep that event in operation and even make it better.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker, before I recognize you, I want to make sure there's nobody else that wants to speak on this issue that hasn't spoken. Okay, Dr. Whitaker.
If council consents to that action, then I would hope that there would be some data included in that report that shows what revenue this event brings into the city over a 30-year period, if it has been financed by the city. There should be some financial reports, something that indicates what type of revenue it's bringing into the city.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody?
Well, let's get that for all of the events. The events this past weekend, if we want to subject all of them to that kind of scrutiny, let's try to find a way that we can judge their importance from a fiscal standpoint to the city.
Right, I'm speaking of privately-sponsored events.
No, I'm speaking of all events.
Right.
Because all of, all the events, whether the private or public, there are many public events that we pay police overtime, and general services pick up after the events, we have to collect monies from booth fees.
I have no issue with that, I just want to make sure privately-sponsored events.
Okay, let's find out where we are in this. Let's get a read of council. Nate?
Yes.
Yes.
Right. Okay, we're asking the city manager to bring back a plan. We're not asking that you come up with a plan to fund it with city funds. And it might be good to, for the newer members of council, that you give a little bit of history on how this came about, and what the community's participation has been.
And also the revenue stream, Mr. Mayor.
Got it. The chair recognizes Vice Mayor Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind those citizens that on Saturday, June 23rd, the City Council will hold a coffee talk with the City Council, a community-style meeting at Badawi at 9:00 in the morning, that's Saturday, June 23rd.
Thank you. Our next item is report on pending items, and do we have any pending items? Dr. Patton?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, we have no items to bring back.
Our next item is non-agenda speakers, and our first speaker is Sergeant Major Clyde Toler, and sir, you have five minutes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I am Dr. Patton, and your lawyer, and Ms. White and staff, Clyde Toler, 1029 Blair Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. First, I want to say, Mr. Moody, you are right. We need some more entertainment here. Because when I was president and all of the Elks, I was the leader ruler, and also for the Fleet Reserve and all, I brought the conventions here, had them in an old Holiday Inn down there, but I noticed since then, it hasn't been, no, no, no big conventions from the Elks, none of these, they just dropped out of the city and they're gone. We brought a lot of money here, but you are right, we do need that. But anyway, going back to just a week, just a couple days before the holiday, Memorial Day, Mayor, Vice Mayor, all y'all, you was at the function at the Holiday, it was outfit, that was a great day, wasn't it? So they had push-ups, so Mayor them got there and did push-up, but me and Ms. Simmons was smart, we didn't get out there because we didn't want to be embarrassed by somebody picking us up. But anyway, it was a great event. I want to say too, that peoples of Portsmouth, and I'm friends and things from other cities, the parade was great. There was more people each year, there's more and more. And the lady, she had it really, I can't think of her name, but I think she in Park Recreation, well, she took Ms. White's place, you know, she had a little old scooter, Ms. White did, but she had that parade in good order. We stepped off right at 10:00, and I tell you, it was great. And there was many veterans on the street, we really had a nice parade. And I think this is a great thing for the city, and we should take our hat off to the citizen of Portsmouth, and all our friends and things that visit the city. But the newspaper and television, they didn't give us no credit. If you looked in there, it was so quick and so fast, you didn't even know you was at a parade. But I think Channel 48, that's the Portsmouth Channel, right? We need to get out there and take the camera and maybe take our own film, then we can probably sell them to the people for maybe $10 or $15, the tape. But it'd be nice to have that, because otherwise than that, you're in the parade, you don't get a chance to see the biggest part of the parade. But I want to say, I've been coming here since 1980, since I retired, and the respect of this council, some peoples are ridiculous. Cheap shots at citizens, and cheap shots at one another, hey, you need to cut that out, that's no good. Now, I came up in a family where I always were taught to respect your elders. I respect those that's not my elders. If you take two peoples in here right now, 45-years-old, they stand up in here, they still won't equal my age. But you see, when I come here, and I say something, and then I get a cheap shot from somebody like that, I all the elders were very disrespectful to me as an elder and a gentleman. I never say anything to this council in any kind of harm way or disrespect, I never would do that. I will walk out. But I tell the sign, you may come over here, may get thrown out tonight, so you come right here and be here to carry me on out. You can get your gavel ready. But I must say this, I was told by a council to look in the mirror when I got home. I did, and you know what I saw? I saw myself as a young man, then I saw myself as an old man. But I tell you what I didn't see myself, I didn't see myself in no chains from my feet to my waist to handcuffs, and I wasn't in no orange suit. So don't disrespect me because something you don't like, or maybe something I said, you can tell me, but don't give me a cheap shot, because if you that cheap a shot to a person, you shouldn't be on council, and good night. You ready to throw me out?
Please. Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Donna Si, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. There's a struggle going on in Portsmouth between the people and the city council. Benjamin Franklin described it well when he said, "There's a natural inclination in mankind for a kingly government." He said it gives people the illusion that somehow a king will establish equality among citizens, and that the citizens will like it. This kingly government is showing up to enforce the destruction of the waterfront by using the shield called the Public Private Partnerships Facility Education Infrastructure Act. We the people don't believe in a king or queen dictating how we need to live our lives. We believe it is our God-given right to self-govern, and these rights are vested in the sovereign authority of the whole people, not in a king or queen. The people's sovereign authority comes from our Virginia Constitution. It tells us that the people's rights are the basis and foundation of government. It tells us that men cannot make a compact that will deprive us or our posterity from the enjoyment of life and liberty. It also tells us the government cannot prevent us from acquiring and possessing property, or from pursuing and obtaining happiness and safety. This kingly government called city council has forgotten that the waterfront property is the public's or people's land and buildings, not city councils. At the city council's retreat in February, one of the four big things talked about was Crawford Gateway revitalization. Because I was sick that Friday and Saturday, I wasn't able to attend. I didn't know anything about this plan until the announcement occurred to attend the review about the Crawford Gateway revitalization on Thursday, February 15th, in the city council's chambers. The Old Town Civic League meeting was scheduled that night. The review could have been scheduled at the Civic League meeting rather than in city council's chambers, since the plan will be affecting the Old Town neighborhood. The Crawford Gateway revitalization plan is a plan made by city council without the people's input to tear down the Old Civic Center, the jail, the city hall building, and 801 Water Street, among other assets. All these assets are the people's assets and owned by the public, not the elected or appointed. City council cannot enter into a compact to deprive us, the people, of enjoyment of life and liberty without our consent. We the people are the source of power, and the Constitution tells us that the people's rights are the basis and foundation of government. The executive officers are the trustees and servants, and at all times accountable to us. The government is us, we the people, and it is instituted for our common benefit, protection, and security of the people, whether in our nation or in our community. Our government is best when it produces the greatest degree of happiness and safety, and is powerfully secured against the dangers of maladministration. The people's government is not secured against the danger of maladministration. Instead of the Constitution being enforced, the Public Private Partnerships Educational Infrastructure Act is used to set aside the municipal organizational chart to prevent their consent. Civic leagues are uninformed about what is going on in the city. There are no representation elected from wards, so that the people haven't elected to talk to, to keep abreast of what is going on in the city. The city has no vision for the people's downtown, as noted in the Urban Land Institute report. The city's focus has been on projects, not an overall development strategy. The city's current vision statement reads that the city will be a safe, friendly city which values respect and protects all of its citizens, visitors, neighborhoods, and businesses. If there was a concern for safety, the Crawford Gateway revitalization plan would approve number nine of the PPEA, which states, "Any improvements necessary desirable to any unimproved locally or state-owned real estate." The plan would be to transform the Old Civic Center into a waterfront safety and security center. The waterfront is the gateway of safety for the people, the nation, and the community. We are a Coast Guard city. The new safety center will be an asset for safety as well, the Coast Guard to provide comprehensive safety and security, as noted above. The Crawford Gateway revitalization plan did not come from the people living downtown. The civic leagues were not informed of this plan. There was no communication from the elected to the people. The Crawford Gateway revitalization plan is a method to cause the people perpetual poverty, excessive taxation, stringent regulations, and the continuous existence of misery. God save the people in Portsmouth.
Thank you, ma'am. And this meeting is adjourned, we have no further business. The meeting is adjourned.